I'd like to call the city of Muskegon City Commission meeting for November 9th, 2010, to order. I'd like to welcome Pastor Tim Cross from Living Word Church, who will lead us in prayer to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Could I ask everyone to stand and remove hats if you have them? Pastor?
Would you bow your heads with me, please, as we go to the Lord in prayer? Heavenly Father, we come to you in the name of Jesus. Your word says that you urge that first of all, that prayers and petitions and thanksgivings be made on behalf of all men, but especially for those that are in authority, that we might lead a quiet and peaceful life in all godliness and honesty. Father, we want to start off by saying thank you for our city commissioners, our city government. We thank you for them. We thank you for our police officers, our firemen, our -- the department workers that help in our city. Father, you said in your word that they were your ministers. They were, in a sense, to help with the civil government and represent you. So, Father God, we thank you for each of them. Father, we pray for them, and we lift them up before you. Father, we pray that you would grant them wisdom, you would grant them insight. And, Father, grant them a sense they not only represent and not only are to listen to the people of the city, but also to be sensitive to you and to what you may be saying and what's right in your eyes. So, Father, we lift them up to you. We pray for your protection for them, your help for them, because, Father, you said in your word that you are an ever-present help in the difficult places of life. So, Father, I thank you for being their help today, for being their wisdom today, giving them strength in the decisions that they need to make today. And, Father, we thank you for them. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Roll call, please.
Mayor Wilmington?
Here.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Here.
Commissioner Wasneski?
Here.
Commissioner Carter?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gowron?
Here.
Commissioner Shepard?
Here.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to call up Commissioner Dave Wentland from the Civil Service Commission, who will be making the presentation to employees of the city of Muskegon, our service awards that we do on an annual basis to recognize those employees and fellow workers of the city that are celebrating anniversaries of years of service. And, Commissioners, if we could all and staff step out on this side so we can congratulate each one of the employees?
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Wentland?
Thank you. It's my pleasure this evening to represent the Civil Service Commission staff to present these awards. We do this on a five-year basis. When these milestones are reached, the employees are granted a certificate and a small monetary reward for their years of service with the city. I think that's especially important in this day and age when we see the cutbacks that are happening in our employees. It shows that employees do work hard for the city and are diligent, and we appreciate their history and their experience with the city. In fact, tonight, we have a 35-year employee that will be recognized. But I'd like to start and have the mayor present these with Timothy Dengar, five-years police officer. Jim Hoppus, five-years plumbing and mechanical inspector. Michael Heig, 10-years, police sergeant. Tony Klybecker, 10-years, public safety director. Shannon Lenore, 10-years, police records custom service. Oniata Bailey, 15-years, community and neighborhood services director. Sean Bride, 15-years, police lieutenant. Karen Cornell, 15-years, income tax auditor. Pete Hughes, 15-years firefighter. Bruce Straley, 15-years, DPW water plant operator. Teresa Akenberg, 20-years, engineering customer service representative. Nancy Baker, 20-years, DPW customer service representative. Kurt Dykman, 20-years, police officer. Henry Feltonowski, 20-years, inspections department building inspector. Barbara Schuldenberger, 20-years, administrative secretary. Burton Straley, 20-years, DPW water plant operator. Tammy Thompson, 20-years, treasure customer service representative. Teresa Moore, 25-years, cemetery department customer service representative. Julie Paragian, 25-years, parking officer. Tim Paul, 25-years, is finance director. David A. Smith, 25-years, water department supervisor. David D. Smith, 30-years, as water department maintenance. And last for tonight is Patricia Beis, 35-years, secretary of city manager.
Did we have any other 30-year ones? I think we did. How long has Joan Stone been with the city?
30.
30 years. Okay. I just want to acknowledge Joan Stone, who isn't here tonight, for her 30 years of service and with everybody else that wasn't here. But when I first became mayor, Joan was up in the administrative office, and she also has been very special to work with, as well as Pat and Barb. On behalf of the city commission and the citizens of Muskegon, we want to thank all of the employees, not only those serving their service industries, but those that continue to work for those of us in the city, day after day, year after year. We really do appreciate the work that you do for all of us as citizens. I do want to acknowledge, however, Pat and Joan and Barb for the work and service that they've done for those of us that serve on the city commission. So, thank you very much. May we have the consent agenda read, please?
Approval of minutes, city clerk. Summary request: To approve the minutes of the city commission meeting that was held on Tuesday, October 26, 2010. Staff recommendation: Approval of the minutes. Contractual agreement, Michigan Department of State, Public Safety. Summary request: The Director of Public Safety is requesting approval to enter into an agreement with the Michigan Department of State whereby the Department of State will provide driver, vehicle, and related information to the city. The purpose for entering into this agreement is to assist code enforcers with obtaining accurate information to meet district code requirements when completing civil infraction citations. Staff recommendation: Approval of the agreement. Liquor license request, Ingalls Business Acquisition Incorporated, 555 West Western, city clerk. Summary request: The Liquor Control Commission is seeking local recommendation on a request from Ingalls Business Acquisition Incorporated, 555 Western, Mike's Inn, for a new entertainment permit to be held in conjunction with 2010 Class C license business. Staff recommendation: All departments are recommending approval. Liquor license request, Carley &amp; Tracy's Saga Tuck Breeze LLC, 151 Shoreline Drive, city clerk. Summary request: The Liquor Control Commission is seeking local recommendation on a request from Carley &amp; Tracy's Saga Tuck Breeze LLC for new resort Class C license to be issued under MCL 436.15313 with entertainment permit, outdoor service, one area, new dance permit, official food, and three additional bar permits, total of four, to be located at 151 Shoreline Drive. Staff recommendation: All departments are recommending approval. Fireworks display permit, city clerk. Summary request: Lisa Lohan, Performers of the U.S., is requesting approval of a fireworks display permit for November 17th at the Muskegon Lumberjacks game. Fire Marshal Metcalf has reviewed the request and recommends approval contingent on inspection of the fireworks and approval of the insurance. Staff recommendation: Approval contingent on inspection of the fireworks and approval of the insurance. Transmittal of the June 30th, 2010 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, Finance. Summary request: The city's June 30th, 2010 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CAFFER, has previously been distributed to city commissioners. This audit covers the six-month transition period that was needed for the city to change its fiscal year. At this time, the CAFFER is being formally transmitted to the commission in accordance with state law. The CAFFER has been prepared in accordance with GASB accounting standards. The CAFFER also includes a single audit of federal grants received by the city. Staff recommendation: Acceptance of the CAFFER for the period ending June 30th, 2010.
Thank you. Commissioners, you have heard the consent agenda read. Are there any items you'd like to have removed for further discussion? Commissioners, Spataro.
Thank you. Just one, item D, Delta.
Are there any others? Vice Mayor Gowron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read, minus item D.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Gowron, supported by Commissioner Shepard, to approve the consent agenda as read, less item D. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Gowron?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasneski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item D, Commissioner Spataro.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move that we approve the liquor license request for Carley &amp; Tracy's Saga Tuck Breeze LLC, 151 Shoreline Drive.
Second? It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Vice Mayor Gowron, to approve the liquor license request, Carley &amp; Tracy's Saga Tuck Breeze LLC, 151 Shoreline Drive. Commissioner Spataro?
Yeah, I apologize for not bringing this up yesterday, because, well, the meeting ran a little long yesterday, but, um, isn't this the Harley-Davidson dealership?
Well, it's basically the same property line, and the applicant is one of the owners of the Harley-Davidson dealership.
Is this a change you use, or is this going to be something new that's going to be happening?
Well, I'm not certain, but I believe that the applicant is here, if they wouldn't mind stepping forward. Mr. Miscotten? We want to welcome you to Muskegon Television. I need for you to step up to the podium there, and I need for you to give your name and
Carl Miscotten, 12,000 Norton Road, Parma, Michigan.
Well, my question was, is that, I mean, the only building on that site is the dealership, and I just want to get an understanding of what the intention is with the liquor license.
There'd be a new establishment, new building built.
Oh, okay.
So, I guess the follow-up question would be, you'll be coming to the city to do a site plan review, and when you have your plans ready, do you?
You bet. Um, we've had, we've got just a basic...
You can move that mic up if you would.
...drawing, but we weren't, until we get the liquor license, we weren't ready to do the plans, but we'll go through all the proper steps.
Okay. Commissioner Carter?
Um, 151 Shoreline Drive, what address is that?
It's between the road that I think would be Pine Street extended and the fire station.
So, it's not the address of Harley?
No.
Oh, so it's the address of the new building?
Correct.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Thanks, Phil.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion, Commissioners? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Wasneski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gowron?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Public hearings, item A, please.
Request for an industrial facilities exemption certificate, Fleet Engineers Planning Economic Development. Summary request: Pursuant to Public Act 198 of 1974, as amended, Fleet Engineers, 1800 East Keating Avenue, has requested the issuance of an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate. The company plans on making investments of $1,145,863 in personal property improvements and $517,157 in real property improvements. Under the city's IFT policy, they are eligible for a 12-year abatement on real property and a six-year abatement on personal property. Staff recommendation: Approval of the resolution granting an industrial facilities exemption certificate for a term of 12 years on real property and six years on personal property.
Thank you. Mike?
I don't have too much to add to that, other than Duana Thompson, who couldn't make it tonight, has met with them. She's happy to report that their minority hiring has gone up since their last investment in 2007, from about 7% to 12% currently.
Okay. That's good. Commissioner Shepard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When you indicate minority, are you talking about gender?
Race.
Pardon me?
Race.
So, the minority that you have there are all females. Is that right? Isn't that right?
No.
You said race.
Okay. I couldn't hear you. Okay. So, the minorities you have then, how many do you have?
Let me get my facts here. There are nine minority out of 73 total. There are 18 of those are female.
Right. So, those nine minorities are not just females?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Carter?
Um, so, just want to be clear that their minority gone up from 7 to 12. What if, so, is that 7% when we did the last IFT?
Yes.
And it's gone up to 12%? So, it's basically a hiring of two people?
Uh, well, the economy has changed a little, and I think they kind of dipped their employment, so it's kind of hard to say exactly how many more.
Um, is somebody here?
Yes, we do have Mr. Wes Eklund from the company. He was here.
Mr. Eklund, I also need for you to give your name and address.
Sure. Wes Eklund, 481 Seminole, Horton Shores.
Okay. How you doing?
Good.
Um, so, your minority participation has, your minority hiring has gone up a little bit from...
In terms of total employees from 2007, we may be down, but the percentage of our employment in terms of minority is up.
So, you really have, have you increased the number of minorities you've hired, or just your numbers have gone down on your employment, which made your minority numbers?
There may be a combination of the two.
Okay. What, are these all engineers that work there?
No. No, we are a manufacturing company. We do have engineers that work there, but it's a small part of the population.
Okay. And you have talked to Duana, and you're aggressively trying to reflect your community?
Absolutely. Our HR director is actively cooperating with Duana.
Okay. You know, I thank you for your investment in our community. I just want to make sure that we're, every company here, which doesn't do a good job, all of them, but we just want to make sure that all our companies here, especially when you're getting a tax break from the citizens, that they reflect the community. And I just want to make sure you're actively, I understand that economic times are kind of bad, and it's kind of hard to get good employees, but I just want to make sure that you're actively searching for good minority candidates, because there are quite a few out there.
Yes, sir. They're doing that all the time.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff or the applicant? Is there anyone in the audience that would care to address this item? Mr. Spataro?
Seeing no public comment, I would move that we close the public hearing and that we approve the resolution granting an industrial facilities exemption certificate for a term of 12 years on real property and six years on personal property for Fleet Engineers.
Second? It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Commissioner Wieringel, to close the public hearing and approve the request for an industrial facilities exemption certificate for Fleet Engineers for a period of 12 years on real property and six years on personal property. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasneski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gowron?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Eklund.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners.
Unfinished business, item A, please.
Second reading: Amendments to the zoning ordinance modify parking restrictions, planning economic development. Summary request: Staff initiated request to amend Section 2326 Off-Street Parking and Loading of Article 23 General Provisions to modify parking restrictions in the downtown parking overlay district. The amendment would loosen the parking restrictions for small businesses that locate into a previously existing building. Staff recommendation: To approve the zoning ordinance amendment. Committee recommendation: The planning commission recommended approval of the request at their October 14th meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Mayor Gowron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move that we approve the amendments to the zoning ordinance to modify parking restrictions.
Second? It's been moved by Vice Mayor Gowron, supported by Commissioner Spataro, to approve the second reading of the amendments to the zoning ordinance to modify parking restrictions in the downtown parking overlay district. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gowron?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasneski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. New business, item A, please.
Approval of sale of city-owned home at 940 Wood, Community and Neighborhood Services. Summary request: To approve the resolution and instruct the Community and Neighborhood Services Department to complete the sales transaction between Mr. Kenneth Baird for the totally rehabilitated home at 940 Wood, which is part of the city's neighborhood stabilization program through the Michigan State Housing Development Authority Office of Community Development. Mr. Kenneth Baird's purchase price is $48,500 with a subsidy of not more than $15,000. Our beautiful four-bedroom, two-and-a-half, one-half-bath home was previously blighted and visibly an eyesore to the neighbors. As a part of the city's continuous neighborhood redevelopment efforts, the house was purchased by the CNS Office from the land bank with NSP funds and completely rehabilitated with a newly constructed garage, all funded with NSP dollars. Staff recommendation: To approve the resolution and direct the CNS staff to complete the sale.
Thank you. Yes? Do you like to come up? Looks like you might have some people to introduce.
Wow, it's so many people in here in Little One. But we are so excited, the Community and Neighborhood Services Department, to sell our first neighborhood stabilization project to Kenneth Baird and Terry and Jordan. And so, if you don't mind just coming up a little bit so everyone around can see, we have a beautiful family of six, and three are here to represent them. But Kenneth is a first-time homebuyer, and we are so excited to provide them with a four-bedroom house for their family on 940 Wood.
Okay. Well, thank you, Anita. I guess we should go move forward to make this official. Commissioner Spataro?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move that we approve the sale of the city-owned home at 940 Wood Street.
Second.
And direct CNS staff to complete the sale.
It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Commissioner Shepard, to approve the sale of the city-owned home at 940 Wood Street and have the CNS staff complete the sale. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasneski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gowron?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And, Anita? We just want to welcome you as the new director of Community and Neighborhood Services, and we look forward to working with you in your new position. New business, item B, please.
Rezoning request for the property located at 1823 Commerce Street, Planning and Economic Development. Summary request: Request to rezone the property at 1823 Commerce from B4 General Business District to B5 Governmental Service District by West Michigan Therapy. The applicant would like to run a transitional living center at this location. Staff recommendation: Staff recommends approval of the rezoning. Committee recommendation: The planning commission recommended approval of the request at their October 14th meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
West Michigan Therapy would like to run a transitional living center at the property. They would need to get a rezoning to a B5 Governmental Service District from a B4 General Business District. They did go to planning commission in October, and the planning commission did approve the rezoning by a five-to-three vote, with Lance Smith abstaining. They also need a special use permit, which is contingent upon the approval of the rezoning, and that was approved by a seven-to-one vote.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Carter?
I move that we approve the rezoning request for the property located at 1823 Commerce Street.
Second? It's been moved by Commissioner Carter, supported by Commissioner Shepard, to approve the rezoning request for the property located at 1823 Commerce Street. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Commissioner Spataro?
Thank you. We've had numerous conversations about this at public meetings over the last couple of months. There's just only one last item I'd like to bring up. I'm sure that the applicants are going to want to talk and we all have our opinion to voice. But a few mon... Uh, a few weeks ago, a couple of meetings ago, um, we voted on some new definitions for transitional housing that indicates that it's for up to ninety days. And in fact, it's the same definition that we allow for the rescue mission and the vet center and so on. They are all included as a like use. Also, we recently entered into and affirmed a memorandum of understanding between the City of Muskegon and the Muskegon County Homeless Continuum of Care Network. And I'd like to read one of the paragraphs from that because I think it's pertinent to tonight's discussion. And it says, and this is on page two or three, if you want to look up on your copy. It says to... The purpose is to work with other agencies in the community to align local, state, and federal resources to develop and support a comprehensive community-based service delivery system that effectively stabilizes individuals and families in their current housing or quickly moves such persons to other permanent housing or to rapidly rehouse those who have lost their housing. This includes a commitment to reduce the use of emergency shelter beds as a means of balancing emergency shelter beds with permanent supportive housing units throughout Muskegon County. And this program falls under that rubric. Uh, we'll be told it's transitional housing and we can call it what we want, but by definition, it's temporary housing of ninety days or less. The reason that's in the memorandum of understanding because the Hou... Department of Housing and Urban Development, which provides a lot of the funding for these things, have realized that the most successful programs go to permanent supportive housing that allows people the choice of living in the neighborhoods where they choose as opposed to where people like us tell them they have to live. So with that having been said, I think, uh, you know my opinions on this otherwise. So, thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Does the applicant care to say anything or... All right. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
No.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasneski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Galeran?
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you. This, uh, seeing... Just so that everyone knows, seeing that this vote was not a unanimous vote, it will need a second reading, which will be done at our next meeting, uh, just prior to Thanksgiving, the Tuesday prior to Thanksgiving. So just so everybody's aware. Thank you. Item C, please.
Master contract for the Muskegon County wastewater system, city manager. Summary request. To consider approving the proposed master contract for the Muskegon County wastewater system, this contract would replace the nineteen seventy access rights agreement and the nineteen ninety-eight amended service agreement. Staff recommendation, none.
All right. Thank you. Well, Commissioners, uh, as you know, uh, I think this is the third meeting or fourth meeting on this particular topic. And we've had the, uh, staff and city attorney approve a resolution. I don't... Did you think I should read it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Before we vote, I'll read the resolution so that you'll know perhaps what we're taking a look at. But I do want to compliment the, uh, the city commission and the city staff. First of all, the city staff are taking the time over the last two years to, uh, share with the other municipalities and members of that group, uh, the concerns that we have on the, uh, contract that is about to expire, uh, in December and, uh, letting the other municipalities know what our concerns were. I also want to appreciate, uh, acknowledge the city commission for taking the time to look at this and do our homework. I want to thank the, uh, wastewater management committee group for taking time and attending two of our meetings to be there to provide answers to the questions that the city would have. And I also want to thank, uh, Bob Kuhn, our retired DPW director, for taking time out also to come and give some valuable input based on his history with the system and certainly, uh, his tenure with the city. All that being said, let me read the resolution. This is a resolution to approve the, uh, proposed master contract for the Muskegon water wastewater system. Whereas the county of Muskegon, by and through its Board of Public Works and fifteen local units of government, have been working on a master contract for the Muskegon County wastewater system, which would supersede all previous agreements, including the access rights agreement and the amended service con... amended service agreement. Whereas pursuant to the amended service agreement, the city of Muskegon is billed for wastewater by the county of Muskegon wastewater system on a subtraction method as opposed to being metered. Whereas the city of Muskegon has requested that wastewater leaving the city's collection system be metered as it enters the county's wastewater system. Whereas the city of Muskegon believes that it has been overcharged by the Muskegon County wastewater system for wastewater service because the subtraction method is not accurate. Whereas the county of Muskegon wastewater system is in the process of installing meters which should accurately measure the city of Muskegon's wastewater sent to the Muskegon County wastewater system. Whereas the city of Muskegon is willing to execute the proposed master contract for the Muskegon County wastewater system if the meters are installed and the issue of the city's overpayment for wastewater service is resolved. Now therefore be it resolved that the Muskegon City Commission approves a proposed master contract for the Muskegon County wastewater system contingent upon installation and use of the meters for billing purposes and resol... resolution of the overpayment issue in the city manager's opinion and after notice to the city commission and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the master contract for the Muskegon County wastewater system after the city manager informs the city commission that the meters have been installed and being used for billing purposes and a resolution of overpayment for wastewater service has been reached. So that's the resolution we're taking a look at. I would be interested in entertaining a motion. Commissioner Spataro?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move that we adopt the resolution as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Vice Mayor Galeran, to approve the resolution as permitted, as read. Is there any discussion? I'm going to come in. All right. Um, my question to the attorney, for those of you that might be wondering, is the, um, in the resolution it says "overpaid," but I think through the discussion that we as city commissioners had in regards to this, we also acknowledge that if in fact we have underpaid, we understand that we owe also. So I think we want to make that perfectly clear that while we believe we overpaid, if in fact we've underpaid, uh, we acknowledge that also. Commissioner Shepherd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to ask the manager, when will this take place? Will this be soon or is there going to be a time?
The... There's two issues as, um, the mayor read in the, um, resolution. One is the matter of the, um, installation of the wastewater meters and then the, um, matter of the, uh, potential overpayment. The meters, um, issue is under contract currently and we anticipate that they will be installed in spring. But we don't have a definite timeline on that. And that's for the reason... I think that's part of the reason why that's included in the resolution. Um, secondarily, the, um, uh, overpayment issue is a... is quite a bit more complex and it's a little bit difficult to determine how long that might take to resolve. So I can't give you a definite answer on that. It could take some time, but, um, hopefully, um, even if it is... even if it does take some time, we can come to some agreement on the methodology that will be used to determine, um, the resolution of that matter.
Now when will they receive this resolution?
Um, well, as soon as, uh, if it's approved, um, we'll transmit it, um, as soon as possible to the...
That's what I wanted to add.
To the, uh, members of the wastewater management committee. And then, um, we'll also give a cursy copy to the county of Muskegon.
Thank you.
Is there any fir... Uh, Commissioner Spataro?
Just one item. You know, right now, as it's constituted, uh, the ultimate decision-making authority for the wastewater system is made up of a committee of the county board of commissioners that are elected by the people on the principle of one person, one vote. And I certainly think that's an appropriate way for any decision body to be assembled. And I think that's also true with this proposed new body. Uh, I'm not proposing any changes to this, uh, resolution as presented, but I don't want to lose sight of the fact that that's just basic democratic principle in a... in a democracy like the United States, that people ought to be represented on the basis that each person is equal and ought to have an equal say when decisions are made that affect them. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasneski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Galeran?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I'd like to make a comment on this now that it has passed, and that is, um, this was a decision that the city commission wrestled with for, as I mentioned, for a period of time. We believe because we're forty percent of the use of the wastewater system that a weighted vote was a fair way for everyone, but many of the, uh, other government entities certainly didn't see it that way. I would venture to guess probably fourteen out of the fifteen, and I can't say that that's probably surprising. But again, um, while this could have been a vote that, uh, the city commission could have been four-three going one way or another three or four weeks ago or two months ago, we realize that the times are completely different now than they were twenty years ago and they're probably somewhat different than hopefully they're going to be in just a few years. But we continued as a city commission and as city administration to try to take a leadership role in bringing this community together for cooperation and collaboration of services for one reason and one reason only, and that is to save all of us, the taxpayers of our communities, some money and provide some additional services. I know throughout the, uh, discussion, particularly when the voting was going on within the other communities, that there were some that were saying that the city of Muskegon is looking for, uh, this collaboration and cooperation so that we can basically take over. That's the furthest thing from our minds as far as elected officials here representing the city of Muskegon. And certainly, my feeling is that the majority of the administrative staff feels the same way. I, uh, I find it unfortunate that, uh, as the city of Muskegon, along with, uh, six other cities, uh, sat down to have a discussion with, uh, members of the business community to do a private-public perhaps study, feasibility study for municipal shared services, uh, so that, uh, the taxpayers would have an opportunity to see whether there could in fact be savings through cooperation and collaboration. That, uh, the private side stepped up and paid probably two-thirds, if not more, for this study to be done. And those that could find a way in their budget, including the city of Muskegon, found a way to contribute a thousand dollars towards this. I regret to say that while this study has been going on, we've had two municipalities within Muskegon County invited, uh, one city and one township that have found it not to be apparently in their best interest. And the reason why I'm saying this publicly is because I hope that the taxpayers as residents and the taxpayers as businesses, if they do have concerns about trying to find government... to find ways to, uh, operate with less dollars or... so it doesn't cost as much for all of us as far as taxes are concerned, that perhaps they would begin to attend some of the, uh, county or township meetings for Muskegon Township and the city of Muskegon Heights. This study becomes extremely difficult when you have two major communities that decide to not even... It's one thing if you don't have the money to put in the budget, but then to basically close your books and say you're not going to be a part of the study is, to me, not an affront as a city of Muskegon, but to me, I believe they're saying to their city residents, we're not interested in looking at perhaps tax savings. So I hope that by with this unanimous vote from this city commission to the other fourteen communities and other communities that aren't a part of the wastewater group, that you understand that we are looking for ways for all of our taxpayers and citizens to save money. And we believe that is through collaboration and cooperation, and we hope that all of the elected leaders and certainly the citizens and businesses within those communities will step up to the table and begin to have serious conversation about saving the taxpayers of this county money. So, that's my dissertation. Item D, please.
Muskegon summer celebration request, city manager. Summary request. Muskegon summer celebration is requesting to pay for city services rendered in two thousand ten over the next three years, two thousand eleven through two thousand thirteen, in equal installments. Staff recommendation, none.
Okay. Thank you. I believe we have Mr. Austin, the executive director. Joe, please step forward. I need for you to give your name and address, please.
Mr. Mayor, so we could get the discussion going. I would move that, uh, we approve the summer celebration request.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Commissioner Shepherd, to approve the Muskegon summer celebration request. Mr. Austin, welcome.
Thank you. Joe Austin, forty-four sixty-six Miller. We're, uh, coming to you today, unfortunately, we're coming to you today, uh, with the request to take our city services bill from two thousand and ten and repay it in three, uh, equal payments in two thousand and eleven, twelve, and thirteen. This is due to, uh, a pretty rough financial year. It is to the point where we are working on just making sure that we're back in two thousand and eleven. Uh, this is a critical issue for us. I... So you know what's going on. I think it's important that you know. We are, uh, working very hard to come back in two thousand and eleven. Everything is on the table. We feel that we provide about fourteen million dollars in economic development for Muskegon, the Muskegon community. We feel that's very essential for the community. Uh, we feel that we're essential for tourism efforts for the county, and we also feel that we provide, uh, an asset for the quality of life to the residents that live in West Michigan. So we're here with our request, uh, so you know what, uh, why we're facing this issue today. Uh, three main things. The economy is probably at the top of the list. Our past sales were lower than they have been in our, uh, eighteen-year history. Uh, we lost two major sponsors and unfortunately, we're able to replace neither one. And, uh, our first attempt at an air show was, uh, not as successful as we'd hoped as far as getting people to Heritage Landing to view the show. So those are our three major issues that we're dealing with. We're working on ways, and again, everything is on the table at this point. Uh, we just launched a, uh, a survey on Survey Monkey today, starting to get some ideas going. Uh, our board is meeting weekly to determine, uh, our path, our future path, and, uh, we're here today to get that path started.
All right. Thank you, Joe. Are there any questions? Commissioner Carter?
Um, I've got one question, I think. It says here that, um, you would, uh, two thousand and eleven, so two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen. You plan on repaying the two thousand and ten and subsequent...
Subsequent?
Yeah, years. You're going to pay those years also.
Correct.
So, if the bill for hypothetically for two thousand and eleven... So, if the bill for, hypothetically, for 2011 was thirty-two thousand, so you'd make a payment of fifty...
Thirty-two thousand plus, right.
Plus, and then you plan on doing that, because you only stayed at 2011. Do you plan on doing that in 2012 and 2013 also?
Correct, correct. Our goal is to come up with a viable festival that we feel fits the economic times. We have to be very aware of that. That's one of the questions in our survey, and just this afternoon, I think we launched at about 2:30, and shortly after 5:00, we'd already had 255 responses, and of those, sixty-seven percent said the economy has either stopped them from allowing them to come or reduced them coming fewer nights. So we've got to develop something that is economically feasible for families in West Michigan to enjoy. That's all there is to it, or we're not going to be around. I think we're not like no other, we're like any other business. You've got to adjust to the economy, you've got to adjust to your customers, and that's what we've got to do. We watched with great interest what Unity Festival did last year by offering ten-dollar tickets, and then raised them to fifteen as the event grew closer. I don't know with our festival costs, as far as X, we could go that low, but we're certainly talking about a similar situation, feeling it's better to have more people in the event at a lower rate so more can enjoy it. That's really what we've always been about, so that's certainly our goal. It's got, we will not go forward without what we feel is a successful plan for 2011.
Okay, so just let me clarify this. You want to split 2010 in three payments, make those payments over the next three years, also make the subsequent payments that you built, put up in 2011, 2012, 2013?
Correct, pay them on a timely manner.
Okay. So, my question to you is, will we be running to this again in 2011?
I have not agreed to do that. In fact, that's what I said. We have to have a financially viable model going forward. That's all there is to it. We cannot continue to come back here, as much as I like all of you, I just as soon not come back every year and be asking for this extension. We just as soon say, good to see you, and we'll see you another time, but we've got to put that together. We've got to get back to ground zero, so we're not continually paying the previous year's bills out of the next year's bills. We can't operate that way. It's just not going to be feasible long term.
Okay, that's my second part to the question, then, considering your answer. Let's say you find it's not feasible to run the summer celebration. Are you planning on continuing, how are, I guess, how are you planning, if we spread this out over the next three years, let's say you don't do anything in 2011, you find that you're not going to hold a festival? I guess, how do we take care of that matter at that point? Is there a plan?
That'll be up to our board at that point. They will make the final determination whether we've come up with a viable plan and where we're going to go forward and how we're going to go forward. That'll be their decision.
So if you decide not to go forward, you're going to kick in the seventy thousand dollars this year?
I don't have seventy thousand with me right now, no.
No, I'm just, I'm just, I'm not, you know, trying to be a hard, but I'm just trying to, you know, this isn't my money I'm playing with here.
Oh, I understand.
So, I just want to make sure, if for some reason, summer celebration folds, are we stuck with a seventy thousand dollar bill? Is my question.
If we, if we go away at this point, yes. If we never come back, yes. I can tell you that right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions of Mr. Austin? I'm going to bring a couple of things up. Joe, first of all, to you and your board, thank you for eighteen years of great shows and entertainment being brought into this community. Also, thank you for doing your best to try and save an air show that was probably destined for failure based on the model that was there after many years of success. And I will be voting for this, but I do want to bring up just a couple of things so that the commission is aware. Number one is, this isn't the first time summer celebration's been here since, as we all know, but I don't think it's our prerogative to sit and say, we're not going to do this. We need to work with this festival. It's far too important to our community. In fact, I would go so far as to say that summer celebration was very key to one of the first steps to putting Muskegon on the certainly regional map of Michigan for people to know and come and visit over the last two decades. But where I have, where I see an issue for us, and this, I'm talking to the commission now, Joe, not you, is that when we get into March and we begin to have liquor licenses that come forward for renewal, and we have business folks that are going to be here that are going to be saying, you know, it's been a tough economic year, I don't have the customers that I had, I, we'll plan on catching up with whatever it is, I'll use property taxes, for an example. We need to be cognizant of that also, because these are also businesses that play an important part in our community. So that's, I just want to say that as a reminder, because we did, about the time Joe was here last year was about the time that we had just finished up doing those. So with that, that's my comment. Any other comments or discussion? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Gallinari?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Warmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringa?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasneski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We look forward to the show.
Thank you for your support.
Good luck.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Commissioners, any other business? Well, I guess we have a few people here. I know that we have some folks here in regards to the Zombie Ship. We do have someone else that has asked to say something, so if you don't mind, we'll get, do that one, and then we'll get to you. So Ruby Chapman? Is Ruby Chapman here?
Yes.
Right, right, bro.
Oh, okay. No? You're all set? Okay. Thank you. Here representing the LST and not the Muskegon Chronicle, I'd like to present to you John Stevenson. Mr. Stevenson, I need for you to give your name and address, and if Mr. Vanderhar's going up there with you also in, with First Congregational Church, welcome.
Good evening. I am John Stevenson, 5660 Westwood, Norton Shores. I'm the vice president of the USS LST 393 Preservation Association Board. This is the Reverend Tim Vanderhar of First Congregational Church. We'll give you his address later. We worked together for three months, along with hundreds of volunteers, to put on the Zombie Ship, a downtown event that would have provided funds, fun for city families and young people. All that work and good potential was discarded in a flash by city inspectors Major Metcalf and Don LaBrenns, who told us two days before the opening, we would not be allowed to hold the event. They arrived two hours late for an appointment made for their convenience and declined to see what we had set up or review our safety plans. They then called one LST board member to go outside the ship, told him we didn't conform to a quote haunted house ordinance, and declined to discuss the options with church leaders. They made it clear they were there only to tell us no, not to work with us in any way. We think that runs counter to the city public safety website's mission statement of quote treating people in a friendly, fair, and respectful manner, end quote. The fact is, we did not originally ask for the city's approval of the Zombie Ship project because we didn't believe we needed it. We have all the city-approved safety systems necessary for a meeting hall, for school tours, and for group sleepovers. We were planning to escort small groups through the ship's decks, just like we do every day. Student theater groups were putting on displays, small plays with a zombie theme, at various points of the tour. There were no mazes, no mirrors, no pitch-black areas. This differed from our normal tour routine only in the imaginative involvement of lots of local kids and their parents. We had no idea there was a special amusement building ordinance, but after obtaining a copy, we came to two conclusions. One, those codes do not apply to what we were planning to do, and two, our safety systems meet the requirements of the ordinance anyway. You have a few sheets in front of you that detail the special amusement building ordinance, Public Safety Department Director Anthony Klebecker, who also did not come on the ship, says we failed to conform to. As you can see, on every point, we believe we do conform. The all-steel ship has a sixty thousand dollar hard-wired fire alarm and suppression system throughout the decks to be used. The exits would have remained marked and lit. The groups would have been escorted in front and in back through well-lit existing passageways in the ship. All doors and stairways would have been open and fully accessible, and the shipwide sound system would be available for emergency announcements. We have no idea why we weren't asked to show we could conform to the safety requirements. Church leaders did call Mr. Metcalf the week before the event to ask that he come down and review their safety procedures, and you have a list of some of the procedures that they had attached to those forms. They did not get a return phone call. This could have been a terrific event for downtown Muskegon. Instead, it is a heartbreak for hundreds of kids, a public relations disaster for the city, and another black eye for the downtown. More than fifty people posted comments on MLive.com in response to the Chronicle's story on the last-second shutdown, all critical of Muskegon city officials. A typical one said, quote, "Yet another example of why our downtown is full of vacant lots." Reverend Vanderhar is here to give you an idea of how many people volunteered to work on this, how much effort has gone into it, and what kind of disappointment his group had to deal with.
Thank you. As has been said, I'm Tim Vanderhar. My address is 6065 Ridgeview Drive, Norton Shores. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I serve as senior minister at First Congregational Church, which is located just a few blocks down Jefferson Street from here. Please let me begin by saying that it was never our intent to avoid any due process or in any way disrespect the city's rightful concern for public safety. We have believed all along, from the very get-go, that since this event was being conducted in a facility that was already open to the public for tours and special events of many kinds, we would be in compliance. So of course, we are very disappointed. Be that as it may, I would like to focus on the positive. We are glad for the many relationships that have been developed, beginning with the crew of the LST, who have worked so hard to create a unique and meaningful attraction in the city. Few people beyond our First Congregational co-chairs, Tom Clark, who's not able to be here, but also Ann Taylor and Dennis Walters, who are in the back there, wave at us, folks, really have any idea of the scope of the involvement of teachers and students from several of our area schools. There were over a hundred and fifty volunteers from the schools, a hundred of them being students from four rival high schools, led by Carly Baldus, who's the director of Theater Arts at Muskegon High School, Sean Lawton, who's the director of Vocal Music at Mona Shores High School, Tony Seifert, who's the director of Theatrical Arts at North Muskegon High School, and Trent Clariter, who's director of Theater Arts at Rees-Puffer High School. In addition, there were parents from each of those schools, members from our congregation, community volunteers coordinated by the Nelson Neighborhood AmeriCorps member, Dolly Hipson. Dolly is here tonight. Finally, we had professional sound and light from Bill Bodell of the Frauenthal Theater. We had sponsorship in kind or in dollars from a number of area businesses, Benson Pharmacy, Clock Funeral Home, Lasco Plumbing, Steve Curtis of Architectural Hardware, Integrity Office Supply, Reichs Bakery, Big B Coffee, Fresh Start Porta Potty, Tractor Supply Company, and Charlie Taylor of Graphics House. Proceeds would have benefited education in our community. The Youth Alive Community Music Program, the youth programs of First Congregational Church, and especially the Muskegon Promise Zone Authority, whose purpose is to give all students the opportunity to continue their education past high school. We appreciate the enthusiasm and hard work of all those involved, especially the young people, and hope that ways can be found to build upon these relationships in the future. Working together, we can accomplish great things. We are eager for our chance to do our part and promise our full cooperation with all those who share that desire. Thank you.
Now, the timing of the order has drawn many complaints. The Zombie Ship had been advertised in media for months, and two huge banners that conformed to the city's sign ordinance had been on display since Labor Day, and yet, the inspections department waited until two days before the event to issue a cease and desist order. That eliminated the possibility of negotiation and compromise. They claimed to know we do not have safety systems needed to conform to the city codes. I think, we believe clearly, they were wrong. That may be why they've scheduled a full fire inspection of the LST for tomorrow. The LST is a nationally renowned veterans museum that brings thousands of people downtown every year, more than twenty-five thousand this year alone. We are self-sufficient and supported completely by public donations. We believe we are a valuable part of the downtown scene and deserved at least a few minutes of consideration for what we had planned. We worked very hard to make sure all the visitors to the Zombie Ship would be safe. We know some of our, some of the city staffers have hard feelings towards the LST board, and we have been described by staffers as a problem group. It's possible that a bunch of crusty old armed forces veterans lack the charm to make friends in city hall, but we have complied with every demand made by every city department. Whenever we have put on an event or opened up new programs at the ship, we have spent thousands of dollars on permits and licenses for projects that provide the public safety and comfort. In this case, we are not asking for anything from the city. The damage cannot be undone. Church organizers lost as much as two thousand dollars for costumes, lighting, publicity, and hundreds of hours of wasted time. The ship's expenses topped a thousand dollars. And we know this presentation tonight is a bit of a risk for the LST. We know from long experience that projects can be inspected to death, and we could be shut down if city inspectors really tried. We have been told before by an inspector that you don't meet the city code till I say you meet the city code. Both of our organizations remain committed to improving Muskegon. We hope to see a downtown revival, and we're doing our part. We're just asking city leaders to review this unhappy experience and try to change things, so Muskegon has a city hall that helps these efforts instead of torpedoing them. Thank you, and I'd like to invite all of you to tour the ship, no charge. Anytime you want to arrange it, so you can see what we're doing down at the LST.
Very familiar. There's five of my relatives with pictures for their service down there from World War II and Korea.
Question?
No, I think, presentation is great. There's a part of me that says, as a city commission, we apologize that this event didn't go off as planned. It sounds like you had a great mission and a great event planned. But there is one key here that I think that you said early in your presentation, Mr. Stevenson, and that was, we thought we met the code because we read the code and we thought we met it and everything was going forward. I don't work in the inspections department. I don't know the first thing about codes.
Right.
I've got a business, they come and inspect me... They come and inspect me every two years. I understand completely. But if there's a lesson to be here, learn from here, I think we received your message here, we'll have that discussion internally. But I think there's a message also to the LST and any other groups within the community. Always check with your local authorities, just to find out. I mean, if you've been doing this for three months to have stopped down, we have special event policies that are here, just a simple stop in or phone call to have said, hey, we're thinking about having a Halloween here. I mean, you have many, many events there. But I do recall that we've had an issue where we were serving alcohol without a license because you thought that it was okay to do it. Well, it wasn't. So I mean, there's, it's a communication thing. We'll, from the city commission side, will accept our responsibility and work on communication. But I think if you're going to have events, I don't think it hurts just to make that simple phone call and ask before we get so close. I'm not making any excuses for it, but that's just what we say.
Well, then, as the church did, I'll point that out and didn't get a call back.
Okay, two weeks or so prior. Okay, yeah, okay, all right. Thank you.
Other questions?
Any other questions, Commissioner?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would care to address the commission? Commissioner Carr?
Seeing no one, motion to adjourn.
Oh, well, all right. Step up. Give your name and address.
My name is Ron Morsefeld. I live at 1254 Catherine. I've been in Michigan for 25 years and lived in this city for 20. I've been retired for five years, and I've worked for three years as a volunteer on the LST, and they've made me a board member. Maybe what we did, we didn't follow and get a permit, or we didn't do exactly to the book. But my question is this: We were down there at 11 o'clock in the morning, and we waited until quarter after 1 for the inspector and Major Metcalf to show up. When they did show up, no, Major's not here. And Major, to me, is a very nice man. I'm gonna go right there and say that. But when they came down there, the inspector from this city would not even come on the gangplank, would not talk to any of the church leaders, would not say anything about why he was doing it. His only thing was, you're not doing it, and I said so. And he did that to one of our representatives down there in back of our pump shed. He wouldn't even come and address the people on the ship. And he never looked at the books we had. He never looked at anything on that ship. That's what I'm mad about. If you're gonna come down and shut us down, at least come and talk to us. Be a man about it. Thank you.
All right. Just a comment on that, Mr. Morsefeld. There isn't anything, there isn't anything that we can do about that at this point in time. As I said, we'll do this internally. Thank you for your comments.
Well, I hope you do. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks. Thanks for being here.
My name is Dolly Hipson. I live at 325 Houston Avenue. I'm in Americor in the Nelson Neighborhood, and I've been doing community development for over a year now. I have some concerns because my job as an Americor member is to listen to what the community says. That includes businesses, neighbors, churches, anybody that talks. That's what I do. I talk to them. And to my amazement, I see a pattern here. As I talked to contractors, over a year ago, I did my own kitchen, and I had several contractors coming in and out of my house. I was surprised to hear the comments from all of the contractors that worked on my kitchen, whose opinion of the city was that it's not a pleasant experience working with the city of Muskegon. I heard that comment from electrical people. I heard that comment from the plumbing people, and from all the different contractors that was working in my kitchen. And I began to ask, you know, for details. That was one of the occasions, and as I go throughout the city, I talk to the businesses on Third Street, every one of them. And I keep hearing the same thing, that it's a very unpleasant experience when you have to deal with the city of Muskegon. Other people have told me that they have businesses in other cities, and they would much rather do businesses in Grand Rapids where they own the business. But when it comes to Muskegon, you just have a problem when you come downtown. And they were speaking about the inspector's department. My mom used to say something that was real common. She was a common person. She said, everybody does not tell the same lie. Somebody else said, if you keep hearing the same thing, there's something to it. So I'm concerned about that, and I felt as a citizen, talking to the Third Street businesses, some of them are, you know, they're small and struggling. I remember the pain and suffering that they went through when they had a similar experience with their little mini mall shut down. I talked to them about their experiences. They had the same attitude. And what I keep hearing is, it's not procedure but attitude that is so disheartening. So I'd just like to ask the city to, let's, let's really take a look at attitude. I have, we have some great people working for the city. I've had some wonderful, positive experiences. I have nothing but praise for a lot of them, but I keep hearing the same thing about the inspector's department. There's smoke there. There might be a fire. And I just ask you to pay attention to what people are saying and give us the respect of investigating. I know in the police department, I'm on the Citizens Police Review Board, and it's a known fact that police cannot police themselves. They're not the only ones. But we citizens, we are all trying to get, trying to bring Muskegon back to life. The Third Street businesses are really suffering. If we got some attitudes that need to be straightened out, we don't need to overlook them. I had an experience last week at the cemetery. I'm a business owner, too. Been in business for 25 years. There is a difference between attitude of people that are city employees than the often newer, for instance. I know as a small business owner, I have to go out of my way to make a sale. And, you know, we do a little extra. I've been in sales for 25 years. When I was at the cemetery the other day, I went and made some final plans, final arrangements. And I was at the cemetery department, and I ran up against a little bit of attitude. I just want to let you know about it. I requested that the person come and show me exactly where we were going to be planted because I'm not real, I don't have a lot of spatial abilities. I just need to be able to see. I can't read blueprints and stuff. Anyway, I said, you know, we're gonna buy it, but I, so they sent out the person who thought it was right here, and he did his probe, and he said, nope, somebody's there. So he went on the other side, and he probed, and he said, nope, somebody's there, too. And he kept probing where he thought we were supposed to be planted, but there was somebody there. So when I went in to purchase the plot, you know, I'm still gonna be buried there. I like the cemetery. It's already a decision. I made a simple request, and I said, is it possible that someone that knows could meet me at the cemetery and show me exactly where we're gonna be planted? Simple request. If I was dealing with a regular realtor, they would've said, no problem. I'll stop by on my way home from lunch, right? Or dinner. Simple. But the response was, we don't do that. Attitude. I remember, again, the first time I went, I remember Ted Russell, when he came to this city. I called one day to make a request, and he picked up the phone and said, Ted Russell, how may I serve you today? I looked at my telephone. I had never heard that kind of service attitude before. It was refreshing. When I deal with Bernadette Young over at Leisure Services, she knocks her brains out to give us everything we can, she can, in doing her job. It's a pleasant experience, but I think the city needs to let people know that you are serving the people, and just because you have a civil service job doesn't mean that you can't go a little beyond to make sure that you're serving the people. It's attitude that these people are complaining about. And I don't know how you write that in the book, but it's not good for business, and it's not good for the city of Muskegon. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dolly. Thank you. 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 Thank you.